I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Has everybody read the previous minutes?
Yes.
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 Do I hear a motion to approve it?
Make a motion to approve last one's minutes.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Bring on it. End the regular meeting and open the budget adoption meeting.
I want to close our regular town board meeting and open the budget adoption meeting. Bring it up.
And that is just everything that I read last month is exactly the same. So I just need a motion to approve it, to adopt it, and a second and a vote.
Do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the
Twenty twenty four.
Twenty twenty four adoption budget meeting or budget.
Twenty twenty four budget.
Twenty twenty four budget.
There you go.
Do I hear a second?
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'll close the budget adoption meeting and reopen the town board meeting. Uh, the sensor quote.
Yes, that is, if you want to look at it, that's about twenty percent less than what we pay with Corson now. I talked to Rick today about the fire extinguishers. He said that we own those, so they're ours. They'll just stay where they are. They'll just take over servicing them. Cause Shane had asked about whether we would get to keep them or if they were Corsons or that was the only question he had about it. And the guy also said that one of my fobs has quit working. He said that they'll replace those with no, for no charge. And Corson charged me quite a bit of money for two new fobs like two, a year and a half ago. And one of them's already quit working. And then they said they'll replace that keypad on the wall with no, for no charge either. So.
When will that take effect?
I'll, if you guys approve um to accept their quote, then I'll call Rick tomorrow and find out what we need to do as far as ending our service with Corson and starting with Censor.
What do we pay for them?
I didn't get the time to write the actual numbers down. I just did a quick figure when I first got that. But as crazy as the last two days has been, I didn't get a chance to actually write the, what they charge us quarterly. I just know that it's about twenty percent less than what Corson charges us.
Per quarter?
Quarterly is what we, what we pay Corson. Yeah, and then the annual fire uh, the sprinkler system, the fire extinguishers, um, the smoke alarms, they come and inspect those yearly. And then we have a quarterly bill that we pay for the service. And they're local to where Corson has closed their local offices and they're, they don't have a local office anymore, really.
That guy cover the cameras too? Does it see mom number at the cameras?
We purchased all the cameras that we have, so they're ours. It would take over everything. Yep.
Maybe we can get some free cameras out of them.
Thank you.
Do I hear a motion on that or?
I'll make a motion to make the switch to censor.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
All approved.
Aye.
Aye.
Silver Smith quote for tablets.
He didn't get the email sent to me yet, so you're gonna have to
Table it.
Table that till next month. I'm sorry. He was supposed to send it to me. We talked about it when he was here with the guys for, cause the prices changed from the quote that we already had. Cause I showed him what I had. And he said that they went up a little, so he was supposed to be sending me a new one.
Uh, fall cleanup date.
That is October fourteenth. So not this Saturday, but next Saturday. It's been on the board for about two or three weeks. And on the last two water bills, I just figured we'd announce it at the meeting.
Trick or treat date.
Yep, you guys need to discuss that and decide when you want to have it. The email that I sent out, more than half of the responses I got are having it on Halloween. But Richmond's is the twenty eighth, but I wasn't able to find out when center bills or lins are having them. They didn't have the dates for them yet when I called to check.
I just found out that that week is fall break. So there's gonna be a lot of people gone on the twenty eighth.
The Lions Club is having their trunk or treat on Saturday, the twenty eighth. And we were really hoping to have trick or treat the same night. And kind of encourage more people to do the trunk or treat instead of having so many kids just running loose around town.
What time are you starting?
Run loose, maybe they'll take a kitten home with them.
Right. Um, so we're starting that, um, we're doing it from six to nine. So.
We have trick or treat from five to eight.
From five to eight, okay.
Yeah.
So it would be in an hour after you start.
Right.
You'd start an hour after they start trick or treating and then you'd go an hour after our trick or treat stuff. That's up to you when you want to have it.
Twenty eighth is good to me.
Twenty eighth is fine with me.
I figured doing one on a Saturday is better than a weekday, sending our kids all jacked up on sugar to school. It's like the teachers have to love us.
A lot of the younger ones, they go to bed earlier too on that side of the play.
Be right, yeah.
Do I hear a motion?
A motion we have, trick or treat on the twenty eighth.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
You say aye, yea or nay, Lord?
No, I, I just, I know the Lord knows it's gonna be gone that weekend. But it is what it is.
Uh, leaf back schedule. That will be coming up.
I know they usually start it like around now and then just do it as needed.
I know they're getting it all put together.
I think Richmond starts the sixteenth and it goes into mid-December. I heard that on the radio this morning.
Yeah. I know they've got a problem with the leaf back and they probably gonna end up taking it to market camps to get it fixed. So as soon as that happens, they start.
I'll tell them tomorrow that, to let me know when they get it fixed, so I can like put a date on the website as to when it's gonna start.
Unfinished business. Storm drains on Hartley happening.
So about eight months ago, if not longer, um, when they done their construction, we wound up with a lot of runoff during all of that. And the drains are plugged up in those areas between Maine and Mill, which is in front of Bob's house. There's a couple of them there where they replaced all that sidewalk, dug it all out. It's full of gravel and dirt in the same way on Mill at Hartley. Kyle had gotten quotes back then about getting it backed out. And at that time, I think he had gotten a quote for about three thousand dollars. And then it was, I do believe Shane had mentioned that he was going to reach out to them as far as Covalt and also the engineering firm at that time. So I would say that nothing's been hurt back on that side, on that side of it. We need to double check on that to see if they're willing to take care of it. If not, then the town is gonna have to at some point in time get that taken care of regardless of whether or not we do anything right this minute. I just wanted it back on the table so then we can get new quotes, reach out to Covalt and also the engineering firm, get another email sent out to them to get this stuff taken care of. So.
What's that engineer doing to walk through this month?
My engineering, it was supposed to. I know that Covalt did come in as far as to address the yards or something like that. And they asked for a list. Um, and I know it was mentioned that they was gonna, people were gonna be put on the list on these different areas and emailed to them. But when they came, came time for a list, the list wasn't available.
Well, it just wasn't available.
So.
You could've put just my name on the top and I'd have walked around all kinds of stuff.
Yeah. So like I said, it's, it's
Remember a list, just put my name on it. I'll take the emails. I don't care.
As far as on this unfinished business, as far as like with the sewer drains, that's the reason why I wanted to brought back on there ultimately. We do not have any up-to-date quotes on that side of it. That's something that we're gonna have to reach back out to. But an email is gonna have to be sent to the individuals that did the work, um, cause it was addressed, I do believe it was like eight months ago approximately. Would have to look back into that. So just bring it up and we can retable this until next month on the storm drainage stuff.
Do you want me to call too?
Nah, I'm either that or I can't. Doesn't matter. Either one. If I get his information and his email, telephone number, all that stuff, I'd be more than happy to reach out to him.
I will. Call him tomorrow. I'll leave myself.
See where we're at with that.
Okay. Meters and yards.
So the meters and yards are gonna also coincide with the drains. Um, there's quite a few anywhere from six to ten meters that have yet still be put in on that side of it. So we need to figure out exactly, the last conversation I had with Shane was that apparently it's all been signed off on. Same way with the yards. If people still need their yards fixed, um, I want to put it back on the table as far as to make sure that we get the meters up and running that need to be up and running cause there's quite a few of them. Um, and then also if there's any yards that still need to be addressed. I know that they did go through and take care of some of them. I seen it from time to time. I do know that Lori mentioned that nobody came by her house on that side of it also, so.
They haven't come and fixed back where I left either.
Yep. So I mean, I'm there as we need to get another list started and actually write it down. And um, if anybody knows of anybody that has areas that still need to be addressed, then please put your name and number down and a brief description, so then we can actually get this stuff taken care of on that side of it.
So if they're not here, what should they do? Should they write them on a piece of paper or rub it off?
Yeah, if they want to put their name and number, address, um, their issue on that side of it, whether it be the yard or if they're having a meter issue, whatever it may be, you know, just write it down, put it in a drop box. Um, if they want to call up here, they can call up Dr. Trino on that side of it, but you know, unfortunately, we're gonna have to actually start a list and even if I need to take some time off, I'm more than willing to go out and help as far as to get the yards back up where they need to be on that side of it.
But you shouldn't.
It's part of sitting up here too, so I'm part of the town.
I know, I get it, but they should've done the job.
We're gonna have to start a new list on that side of it because when the engineer, or the Covalt showed up, showed up, they asked for a list.
And there wasn't one.
And there wasn't one. So I apologize on that side of it to everybody, but like I said, we are going to see if we can get another list on that side of it and get everything taken care of.
And don't we pay an attorney? Shouldn't he be sending a letter at this point?
She.
She, he should.
So once we get a list, and like I said, then we'll have to look at all of that information, you know, to say yes right this minute. I don't think a yes is the answer. We just need to figure out what the problem is and figure out exactly what, what needs to be done and how, what direction we need to head.
The engineering firm has been pretty good to work with this, so we'll get that.
Yeah, well, one of us will reach out to them and have a conversation with them and then figure out what direction we need to head on that side.
I have a partial list and I asked, I added Jenny Cox and Kathy Finney that's been here the last two or three meetings.
You have the drain on Davis and twenty seven that's
I just wrote names down.
This, I don't know who owned. I think it's on right away.
I'm not exactly sure which one you're talking about.
You said it's a stop sign at Davis and twenty seven, right over here on the ride is one of the main drains right there. It's the big ones.
Yeah.
They put landscape fabric over it. And it's got the brown hay, whatever they call those things that stop the water and stop the dirt all the way around it to where it's a foot above to where the drain is.
Yeah.
So hey, the drain's not working like it's supposed to. And I think they told me it was love.
Yeah.
And I get that, but.
As far as on those drains, that there is gonna be off of our other project, our stormwater project and which is still gonna be the same engineering firm, but it's a different contractor. And like I said, well, I've got it wrote down here, so we'll reach out when we talk to
I mean, I can understand the veil of the straw around it, but putting that landscaping fabric on it has caught every leaf, every piece of straw, everything. And it's, they, they have to do that according to the DOT and the state regulations. They have to go with landscape.
Well, as far as to try and keep dirt out of it on that side of it, to a certain time, to a certain timeframe. But like I said,
Okay, we'll all get in touch with DOT then.
Yeah. So like I said, we'll, we'll start getting this stuff addressed as far as on that side of it.
Okay. Department reports.
Yeah, I got sewer and water and
We got the street.
Do you wanna go ahead and do the street?
Yeah.
They're not making copies for everybody anymore.
I think there was.
This isn't like that two months ago.
You got ones, didn't you?
He made cop, he definitely made sure he made copies for you. So you have copies. I don't know where they are, if they are still in your mailbox, but I know he made copies.
I don't have them. Go ahead. I'll get mine on my mailbox.
Michael might have them all. I don't know.
No, I just have one, one set.
But I know Walker made a copy for Lori.
There could be another one.
Well, that's funny. Well, this one's got the quote on it too for the police.
Oh, I know those these quotes.
Um, street department patch holes on Main Street, Vine Street, and East, North Street. Replace signs of Davis and US twenty seven. Replace signs of Mill on US twenty seven. Fix swings that have been tangled up and taken apart at Park. Trimmed up trees on Ross, Amel, Fountain Avenue, Walnut, Cherry, and at Park. March City Building and trimmed all bushes. Assisted David Walker with replacing flags on US twenty seven. Assisted sewer department with trimming and removing brush around the north lift station and discharge point. Assisted street department with the discharge. Assisted sewer department with the discharge. Sorry about that. Getting ready for leaf cleanup. Trigger control for backpack is broken. Costs three hundred and fifty dollars for John Deere to fix it. Uh, the new quote for new blower, backpack blower is four fifty-eight ninety-nine. And that's, it's from John Deere. And I do have a quote going.
The quote is just for the new one, right?
Yes. So I do have a quote here for a new backpack blower.
Again?
Yeah.
I would say repair the one that we had.
That makes like the third, fourth one that we had. That makes like the third, fourth one that they bought since I started.
But I think it was left in the back of a vehicle and it got broke. Knocked it up where it's supposed to be on that side of it.
So I think here, motion on what to either fix it or to buy a new one?
I would make a recommendation to fix it instead of buying another one. Or see if we can just buy the parts instead of having John Deere do it and just buy a new trigger and put it on ourselves possibly.
Absolutely, I second that.
Lori?
I think he was seconding my motion.
Yeah, if that's a motion, I second.
As far as repairing it, getting it repaired, whether or not it is us buying the parts and then having our guys put it on. And if they can't do it, then have John Deere fix it for three hundred and fifty bucks.
Okay. Take a vote.
All in favor?
Aye.
Lori? Okay. Okay, we'll fix the old one.
Couldn't hear my head growl.
I heard it.
You're the only one.
And that's all I've got from the street department.
You want to go to sewer? Yeah, I got them all. Read them off. So on the sewer department, um, things pretty much they done. They did discharge out there at the lagoons for the month of August. They did one million eight hundred and forty-two million gallons. Uh, they did one discharge in September. Um, got the lagoons mowed twice, trimmed the trees around the north lift station, discharge station, and cleaned up the lift station. They had their IDM inspection at the lagoons. No major issues found. Um, they installed a new chlorine line at the lagoons. And then they had chemicals delivered. Um, then they went and serviced. It looked like heaters at the lagoons were tested for winter prep. Um, and then they had gotten, they had, last month they had mentioned about getting stone around that area. Um, Shane said he had done some investigation and said that there should be stone out there. There is no stone out there. I did take some pictures if anybody wants to see it. They're looking at getting stone for around when IDM come up, comes up. Um, it's all grass right now around those tanks and part of the grass is dead. So when it does rain or anything else, it just turns to mud. So they were looking at actually doing gravel along their footpaths and then around those tanks and stuff like that. Um, they've gotten some quotes and I'm not a hundred percent on exactly how to add this up, but um, ultimately we can use our dump truck to go get stone and do it ourselves on that side of it. Or a rough estimate is gonna be anywhere from nine hundred to a thousand dollars for all of the stone. And it's roughly ten ton per inch, four inches. So you're looking at about forty ton total on that side of it between two different types of stone, what they're looking at doing.
And would they have to still move it and place it?
So that, yes, they, they would do all of the, so if they had it tri axled in, um, and they didn't write down on it would come up for seventy threes, twenty dollars and fourteen cents per ton. Um, and then same thing for nines on that side of it. Um, with Barrett paving doing it, I guess per load is about forty dollars per load. Cause they have a tri axle instead of whatever the other ones are on that side of it. So if we have them truck it in, Barrett do, or any of them do it. B and B is a hundred and twenty-five a load. DARE is a hundred and twenty. Durex is ninety dollars a load, but then once it breaks down, Barrett is like forty dollars per load because they have a bigger truck and it'd be less trucks.
And that is still paying for the ground on top of that?
Yep, yep. But it estimated anywhere from nine hundred to a thousand dollars for out there at the lagoons to, that's where they do all their testing and not that a lot of chlorine is spilled, but a little drop of chlorine, it literally, it does kill the grass right there. I mean, they don't, they don't get deemed by IDM real bad, but that is one of the things. And that's one thing that, um, I can't remember if it was Mike or Doug, one of them said that it would be a good idea to go ahead and get gravel all the way around there. Doug, Doug, as far as going ahead and getting gravel put all the way around there. Gonna make it look better, but it's gonna make it safer to walk on.
And that would come out of sewer.
And that would come out of sewer.
Questions, thoughts? I thought they were just doing around the lagoon. I thought that was
Nah, that's what I thought too, but it wasn't. There's already gravel around there as far as it's got grass grown up too. But this is just around the tanks or
The chemical sheds and the
Chemical shed and tanks and stuff like that. So.
If our guys haul gravel, they could probably maneuver it easier with the small dump truck.
I would probably say so on that side of it. I mean, as far as
Are we just gonna come and dump it and respread it?
Yes, yep. Which would be anywhere from nine hundred to a thousand ultimately if we don't have their trucking fee. We would probably wind up knowing with the number of loads that our dump truck on that side of it. Probably wind up costing us more with their time on that side of it. So I think cost factor wise, I think it'd be better off for to have them have Barrett go ahead and truck it in on that, that side of it.
Right.
So. Go ahead and make a motion. I'll make a motion that we go ahead and get stone out there at the lagoons around the chemical shed and the tanks.
And Barrett hauling.
Yeah, Pat Barrett hauling.
Do I hear a second?
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And uh, still on the sewer part, um, the only thing left would be to look at a new computer or laptop um, needed for David as far as on that side. They're just using the one right now on that side.
They have two.
They do have two.
There's two computers back there.
Oh.
And that's why, I mean, I don't know if Kyle wants, is saying that the one is his computer and the, the two have to share the other one.
Right.
There's two computers back there. There's three of them. They don't spend that much time on the computer. Do they really need three computers?
If there's two computers back there, then I don't see any need for it on that side of it. So.
Cause we got Chase one first and then it was maybe the next year that we got the second one. So, I mean,
I agree.
If you want to get them one, that's, I don't have a problem with it cause there'd be water and sewer, but there is two desktop computers back there.
Two desktop computers back there, then I think they can take turns as far as on that side of it. Cause it's not like they got a lot of emails and stuff like that on that side of it.
Right. I mean, if they was spending four plus hours a day, each one of them had the computer doing stuff, then it would be justified, but.
Right. Yep. No, I agree. I'm putting on that. So. And I'll read off on the pricing on that right there.
Okay. Uh, water department mowed the plant twice, got hydrants GPS complete. Also GPS meter pits that were knocked down in central drive. Annual testing done and sent to H N L along with well test for triad. Finished flushing hydrants. Twenty-three was left and got the flow of hydrants gallon per minute. Twenty thousand seven hundred and seventy gallons were flushed. Back washed twenty-two thousand gallons this month. Water tower overflow, overflow spout taken apart and cleaned. Water truck washed and decals put on truck. Skate assist down half a month working with Georgie Booth on quote. New cylinder holder was put in at water plant. Quotes for meter replacement and fix. Quote for a what?
Yep. No, you're doing.
Quote for a hundred and three water meter move and replaced on pages behind.
That's gonna be at Water Street, um, apartment or it's gonna be the building one oh three. So was it Mike or Doug? Doug. So, was it Mike or Doug, Doug?
Doug is the one that was the thing that they, they were.
Yeah, Doug is the one that, that was the way thing. So they went out there to one oh three to look at those there. Um, they are inside and they still have the old meters on them. They're not accessible by the town employees to be able to read them or update them with the new meters. Um, they've gotten quotes as far as per Doug's request as far as to move the meter pits out, meter pit outside. Um, they did get close, they reached out to Bader. Triple J and then also Reynolds, um, Triple J came in and quoted and then Bader gave a quote also, do you have it? There should be a quote up there for. All right, here, I got it. It's in wrong stack. So anyways, um, in order to move it back outside to where it needs to be to have accessibility, they're going to have to bore. And the town employees do not do that, so it'd be hired out. Bader came in with a, a price of two thousand three hundred and four dollars and ninety-five cents. Triple J gave a price at three thousand one hundred and thirty-six dollars. Um, and that is to get everything outside as far as on the boring side of it. We have pricing as far as we're going to have to do a new meter pit, sand, gravel, the lid, extension. And then actually we're going to have to buy two meters, two readers, all of that, um. And approximate price is right at about forty-five hundred dollars for everything. Our guys will be assisted with, um, Doug as far as hooking everything up on that side of it. So, but this is something that probably should have been done and that has not been done. And unfortunately the town is going to have to get it taken care of.
And what is in the engineering quote?
That part I, I've requested as far as the contract as far as what they were supposed to be doing on that side of it.
How many meters would we talk about?
Um, so right now, I think.
All the meters were supposed to be moved outside. All the meters were supposed to be moved outside.
Yeah.
And one oh three isn't the only one that's not.
It is not there, you've got the.
Post office.
Yeah, post office, there's quite a few of them.
Around First Street.
So right now on this one here, in order to fix it.
They do manu- there's still ones that they have to manual read even though they're not supposed to have to.
Right, so this is something, this is still going back to the storm drain and stuff like that on that side of it.
At the one oh one, how many meters are we talking about?
I'm not exactly for sure on the exact total, um, but I think it's anywhere from six to ten of them.
Forty-five hundred dollars a pop or?
No, 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 no.
Some of them are cheaper, right?
Yeah, so on some of them, we just need to put in meters on that as far, and then some of them, we just need to do the radio heads on that and then, um, but on this one here, this is the, hopefully the biggest one.
Yeah.
That side of it, um, this is moving it outside because we do not have access to it and the town has to have access to those, um. And unfortunately, we're at a spot right now as far as that it has to be taken care of and we need to, I feel we need to get it taken care of on that side of it.
And once again, if you don't have access to it, how do you read it?
It's got a touch read on the outside of it, like.
That one doesn't. So, they, they have gotten access to it, but as far as full-time access, we have to have full-time access because we have one up over here too that we actually have a key on that side.
Yeah, I'm just hoping sure that it, they're packing their water, but you know.
Right, oh yeah, right, yeah. Yep, so, but like I said, it, it is to get it updated as far as with the new meters, get it outside to where, because if anything happens to it, we've got to be able to access it on that side of it.
Yeah, and right now if they're not home, we can't get to it.
Right, you can't get to, so right now you're looking at an approximate because there's, on this quote, there is, so in other words, an extra large pit or a regular pit and they can put two in it. Ultimately, if they go with a regular pit, it's going to be cheaper, so, but the approximate price right now is about forty-five hundred dollars.
Yeah, please don't put two meters in a pit again. That's terrible.
Well, it's two, I mean.
There's like five pits that have two meters in them.
Yeah.
I'm just saying from experience, but.
Well, as far, so it's an apartment building for that and there, as far as the road being there where it has to go, there is not enough space to do two pits on that side of it, so that's the reason why they have to, and this is per the guy that actually is over, our water department is what he is recommending in that area.
As long as it's going into the same place, that's fine.
It is, yes, on that, yes. No, it's, it's not like, cause I think it was yours, wasn't it, or somebody, somebody had two of them in it and.
They got switched.
They got switched on that side.
The engineers wrote the wrong numbers on the paper, that's how that happened.
You know, so.
Cause there was another pit that was the same way.
In the way, it was a mess.
Mm-hmm, I agree. Call for a motion, Steve.
Right here, motion, get this done or? For the discussion or?
Clear as mud to me.
I'll make a motion that they go ahead and get it set up for Bader to come in and do the underground work as far as to where our guys can turn around and go back and actually put the pit in, put the meter pits, or the meters, get everything hooked up on that side. And the approximate price, like I said, is about forty-five hundred dollars.
Okay, are we going to motion?
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I think it depends on the guys that understand meter pits and heads and all that stuff.
I picked up some of the lean blow, but some of them are just like, I don't know.
So we do not have any. So the next item on here as far as on the.
There was a lot of them before we did this project that they were in the house, gas meter light.
Yeah.
The same with Tony Foster's, the garage, his was inside the building. But Chase took that one out.
Yeah.
It's actually very common, I don't mean to interrupt, but Richmond had this, a huge issue. I worked for the water company for an half years. It was huge, the issue's huge. All those old buildings downtown, they were all inside.
Yeah, the first time the gas man just came in my apartment to read the gas meter, I about lost my mind.
So the other thing that he has supplied quotes for is, um, replacement. The town as of right now does not have any extra water meters. Yes, no?
Um, not enough. And I, I'm pretty sure the account that I was told the first time I asked was wrong. So I don't think there's
Yeah.
As many five eights, which is what most of them have.
Correct, there is.
I don't think there's as many of them out there as what I was told.
They're still waiting on to find out exactly because they still don't have the prints for the system. On that side to say, you know, so they know who has five eights, who has three quarter, seven eights, one inch.
They should all be five eights except for one inch, two inch and the four inch.
But they're waiting on all that, but they would like to go ahead and have at least ten on hand is what they're asking for. Um, and each price on the five eights with the six foot antenna, they're three hundred and thirty-seven dollars and fourteen cents.
Per meter.
Five eights, and that's with the radio head. And then, um, so, and then there there's like three parts to a meter. There's the actual meter, there's a bottom part of it, then there's a radio head on that side of it. But like I said, they would like to have at least ten of them on hand.
Doug and Mike.
Complete meter.
Complete meters on that.
Doug and Mike, the operators said that you should have ten of everything.
Right, so in other words, I mean, you could be looking at also as far as the just the head and the antenna only. Um, they, they're going to need at least four of those. That is two hundred and ninety-five dollars and thirty-eight cents. Um, so the museum, it looks like they need.
A four inch.
Yeah, on that side of it and it's ordered, so to, there's three meters back there, um, two of them was taken care of, the third one was not. In order to take care of that one, it's going to be another two hundred and seventy dollars and seventy-seven cents. So the total.
There's like five different quotes there. How are we supposed to know what, what's what?
That's the three fours.
Hold on.
That's the actual five eights, three fours meters. With the six foot antenna, three thirty-seven fourteen.
Now, and then when you go to the next page, isn't it just kind of like, if you do this, we don't need to do that.
So this is on, the one that you're talking about, this one here Lori. This is on the meter pits as far as, so like if we go with this, you're looking at. This is the pits for over there at one oh three. That we were talking about. This has to do with the pits, so they were given, so in other words, if they go with the extra large one, the twenty-four by thirty-six, that's the price on it, then if they go with the eighteen inch extra heavy, that's the price on it, so it's, it's either or on that side of it because it is a driveway area.
Bob explained very well my opinion.
Didn't add all these up, so bear with me. So you're looking at, as far as on the quote for the spare meters, heads, complete ones, plus then the four additional heads and antennas. And then they also, the one for up there at the museum, you're looking at four thousand eight hundred and twenty-three dollars and sixty-nine cents. So that's what that has to do with. So you're looking at roughly forty-eight hundred dollars in order to have the spare parts that they may need if there is a problem and they're able to keep it up and running, because there is no, that meaning, put it that way. And that's what was recommended by the operators to have on hand, because just as they've had a couple of them go out and they did replace what it is that, um, we did have. And there being, some of it is underneath warranty on that side of it, so that is being taken care of also.
Right here, motion on purchase of meters.
And there's a many difference if we do it this year or next year because of.
No, because it doesn't, it's not, doesn't affect the budget.
I make a motion that we purchase the extra meters, parts and all that's needed.
You're out here a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I don't know if I can understand it. Doesn't matter.
You still have your voices heard.
I'll explain it to you afterwards on that side.
Having exhaust fan installation quoted for the chlorine room at the plant.
No, he's having it done, so those things to do, projects.
Still working with Bob on quote for the skate assist and finish locates and meter pits on GPS. Find all curb stops and note ones that don't have them painted don't have them painted them as well. Things with meter issues and replacement costs are still being found and worked on.
And that is all the water department.
Uh, police report, uh, see attached monthly report, seven cases drawn, if two involve my cases and counting cases. Completed firearms, rifle, handgun qualification, two hours completed force on, force training, six hours. Getting ready to start handlers. Course Terrell and, and I mid-October week long training Rebel and Petri for the dogs are working with. Uh, booth car radios installed, work like, working, ready, new system. Explorer issues fixed, getting ready to hook up base radio in office, getting ready to install kennel and explorer.
Anything else? Okay.
I believe that's it.
Yep, as far as the department reports.
Pizzers for who's first?
And I swear I wasn't here to complain at all.
Yeah.
I appreciate the street signs, really appreciate them, been asking for them for a long time. But then I hear our guys install them. And then I hear our guys are doing these meter pits.
We have, we have to get stuff taken care of.
I know you have to get it taken care of, but are we going to be able to go back on the engineering firm on this? I mean, who dropped the ball? Who signed for pit pits that weren't dug and meters that weren't put in?
I have no clue, I have no clue.
Well, that signature somewhere, that sure would be nice for the public to know who was the one that signed off on the ones that weren't done. Um, I guess I need to get hold of the DOT to get that drain fixed down there at Davidson twenty-seven.
No.
I'll do it.
I'll take a look at it as far as that and then once I reach out to.
I mean, just common sense tells you if you put a drain down here and you build everything up around it, it's not going to drain.
Right, no.
And I get, it's my basement that gets flooded, so that's why it says something.
Yeah, nope.
Yeah, appreciate that, it's going to take care, appreciate him. If he needs anything for that dog, since his barn burnt down, all he's got to do is say the word. I'm helping with anything he needs. I didn't know if he had dog food in there, anything like that. Um, the alert system, Kerry touched on it last month, gave you guys paperwork on it. I don't know if you checked into that or not, but I don't understand why we need to pay I, I don't know what it was, how much it was. But when we already seem to have a system in place. I mean, if I can get a text that the court's office is closed on a Saturday, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
And I'm not saying. And I'm not saying I don't want that text, I'm just saying, why can't we tie these two systems together? Why can't Kerry have access to it, so if there's an emergency, something like that?
I I am, I am an admin on that one. This one's more designed for like, I hate using LAN as a, as a thing, but they had that active shooter a few years ago. And I won't have access to get to computer login and I can go on an app with that and ch 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 ch, and put what I need out right in there.
Well, I didn't know if he had access to it or not, I think. What Wes is the fire chief, think he should probably have access to it, you know? Till we get something installed, till we get something going. I mean, if it, just like say if there's a fire somewhere or something like that, there's explosives, there's tanner, you know, you never know. So it'd be nice if they could get access to that. And not, since we're up, are we paying for the, for the system we're using now as far as?
The website?
Yeah, what you're putting out.
Yep, I have, I have given the login and showed how to post an alert to the water guys and Kerry.
Okay, okay, that's good.
So nothing to look into as far as trying to do.
Yeah, I mean, I don't see, I don't, we don't have, if we've got this in place and we can learn how to use it and it's there, there's no sense in paying for another one.
Right.
You know what I mean? Because if I'm getting a text and an email, the only other thing the app's gonna give me is a lot of call, I'm not gonna answer it anyhow, you know what I mean?
Yep.
So, um, but I really do appreciate the signs. It just bothers me that we have to pay for it. You know what I mean? I feel like the ball was dropped somewhere along the line. I get it's a big project, but didn't we pay somebody to kinda oversee this? You know what I mean?
My all he can.
Or did we just let, or did we just let the engineering firms? Did we pay the engineering firm and they were supposed to look over?
That part I do not know. That's what I'm looking into.
Yeah, okay. I trust you, so.
They had an overseer here on site.
At this point, I do not know, you know, if I know who it was, I'd tell you, but I mean, this is just as far as us up here tonight is.
Did you say you're gonna? With the water situation, the way it turned out, the head guy from the company, the water installation firm was fired. They brought on three different crews, and that's where information got lost.
It's gonna be there somewhere.
Right, and it's just looking, and that's what I'm starting to look into.
Wow. What a mess. I didn't realize that was such a, wow. And we're the ones that got screwed and then stories are sitting here holding the bag, and then we're paying for it, you know what I mean?
We'll figure it out.
I know, I know you'll get to the bottom of it, but we need, this is what attorneys are paid for, you know what I mean?
Yep.
Let them go turn them loose on, because it's, um, what's it been, a year? When was the last check written?
Yeah, it's been a while.
You know what I mean? And why isn't somebody, why isn't everybody up the engineering firm when they walked through here, when they did their walkthrough? How could we not have a list of the properties? You know what I mean? If I would've known, you know, I could've got a list together like that. It's, it's, it's not hard, it's not hard.
I assure you, we're looking into it now on that side of it, so like I said, if anybody has any concerns or anything else like that, please uh, do it at Dropbox or call up to the clerk and, you know, write it down.
Can you just send an email?
Yeah, email would be great, because I, I get those also, so.
So we're just, so I'm gonna put that out on the Fountain City side.
Okay, yeah, that'd be fine.
Then have them get ahold of it. Uh, can I get a, you gotta, I didn't bring anything to write with, the trick or treat times and cleanup? When it's gonna be, and I'll go ahead and put that in there too.
Yeah, I'll get that before you take off, when the meeting's over, I'll make sure it's all wrote down for you, David.
All right, you can text it to me if you want, because I'm taking off.
Yeah, I'll get it, yeah, I'll get it to you, David.
I appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you.
Who's next?
Get dumped up.
From behind.
Do you need more paper?
Me again, the oldest high school student, Northeastern, representing the uh, community service class. These kids wanna do some added work in the park besides the memorial area, and they fired this list off this morning, and I know Shane got a copy. Um, and you all have one now too. Looking for any materials we might get help with, paint and brushes, um.
Have you reached out to Lowe's?
Not yet.
Lowe's offer assistance um, for stuff like that, and I just, I can't remember. He's gotta be the manager, and he'll direct you what you need to do, apply for that.
Okay.
I know as far as on two items on this, as far as repairing playground equipment, I do know that my understanding is that there is new seats back there at the garage, and then this tether ball, I do believe that we have two of them back there also.
Okay.
So we definitely can check into as far as get those available, um.
I've got the hand tools to.
Yep.
The Girl Scouts got the seats, but Chase was supposed to install them.
But they haven't been installed yet, you know, so as far as I can check with them as far as getting those out to there, um. As far as re- repainting, does the town have any money in the budget for the parks to be able to buy some paint?
Just your budget is so tight, there ain't any extra money anywhere.
Jerry, can I use my OOC for anything, there's a certain policy to this?
You can count on me, as far as the donation, you tell me what you want, I'll be more than happy to go buy it for you.
Okay.
Do you know how many gallons of paint we're looking at?
They might have some paint back in the back, so you don't want to touch it.
Maybe one or two gallons per shelter or something like that, I honestly don't know, but um.
Yeah, let me and Mike know.
Look, Kyle might, there might be some paint in the back, they might have some back there, Kyle just have to look.
Because Zeebo's not even a year old.
Right, I don't think that's gonna, maybe just wipe it down or something like that. I'll shake a few trees from Kerry's recommendation. Maybe, maybe fall break, we could get those equipment items and.
Yep.
Get them thrown, okay, we'll shoot for that.
I'll reach out to Joanna at the Coffin House.
Okay.
Because we have a lot of school groups that use the park for lunch, to see if there's anything we can do as a monetary donation or something towards that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I guess it's my turn. Alright, so I guess I'm here wearing a couple of different hats tonight. So first, um, with the Lions Club, um, we are doing our trunk retreat. Um, and we invite the whole town to come and set up for that. Um, and a big thanks for Levi Coffin Days. It was great, we thought it was a really good success. Um, I thought the parade went awesome, not to toot my own horn, but I thought it was pretty great. Um, thanks to the police force, you all helped us tremendously. Um, we are accepting any recommendations for next year. Things that you liked, didn't like, want to see, don't want to see, you know, just get with me. Um, I'm already starting to work on next year's Coffin Days to make it bigger and better. So, um, and then switch hats, now for the Coffin House. Um, it is school season, um, so we have tons of field trips starting to come in. I think this month is supposed to be our busiest month since the interpretive center opened in two thousand and sixteen. Um, so we have lots of school buses coming in, leaving. Um, we try to make sure that they're not blocking twenty-seven. They're not blocking the road going through our parking lot. Um, and then they do use the park and the meeting house um, for their lunches, so sometimes they'll walk back and forth. Just a heads up, you see a bunch of kids walking around, that's what it is. Um, and then this Saturday, we're starting um, our program up again. Um, for the first Saturday of the month during the fall, winter months, we do an life in an early Indiana home program for children. Um, so we take them through the house, um, teach them what it was like to live in a, a home during that time, chores they would do, school, stuff like that. So we invite um, the kids in the community to join in on that program as well. And then our cemetery tour, um, October the twenty-first, um, that is the second and the last tour of the year that we'll do of the cemetery. Um, that will be um, done on the African Americans that are buried there, so we invite everyone to come for that as well. And then for the um, Ford Fountain City, the town committee, um, we have that meeting on Thursday, this Thursday at Pizza King at six thirty. We invite anyone and everyone to join in with that as well, and I think that's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Bobby, next?
So my question is, um, the issue that I came in last month with, with, has not been addressed, the reimbursement. Um, I've gotten no information back from anybody if it's been investigated or it's been checked into, nothing.
Go ahead. So as far as per the ordinances that are set up, you know, as I touched on briefly at last time, on that side of it, the town own, has ownership from the treatment plant, all the water, all the lines going up to that septic tank. The town owns the septic tank. Anything from the septic tank to the house is the homeowner's responsibility.
Except that, and I'm gonna bring this up again, just like I did last time. That septic was not put in by us. That septic was put in by the company that you guys contracted to put in the new septic system. They did not hook it up correctly to the house lines. Now, that's not my responsibility, because we didn't put in the septic. They did, alright? If they're responsible for putting it in, that means that they're responsible for putting it in correctly. They did not.
She's got a line that comes from the kitchen and then the bathroom.
Yeah, you know, as far as so, it has worked for twenty-five years and then the remodel is done.
No, 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 now I, you asked me.
And then we have an issue.
No.
Now, per the ordinance, as far as per the ordinances.
Now, hold on a minute. Hold, hold, okay, now look, look, I, I was very patient last time, I was, you know, I kept, kept my temper, nothing, you know, I, I didn't. The bathroom is in the same place that it was always in. Nothing has been moved, nothing has been changed except for the toilet in the bathtub. Okay, has nothing to do with that. And I said to you specifically, yes, the whole time that we've lived there, we've had issues. However, we associated that with the age of the bathroom, not with a problem. The problem really, it, you know, really came to light when we had, you know, when I redid the bathroom, changed the size of the toilet. That's when the problem came to light, because it wasn't enough of a problem previously for it to show itself. But it, and, and I've had more than one person, more than one person who has told me, yes, when you change the size of the toilet because of the different amount of water going through the pipe, that if there is a problem, that's when you're gonna see it. I wanna hold, okay? However, the bottom line is we didn't put that septic in there. The town of Fountain City put that septic in there. And it was not hooked up properly when it was done.
I, I'm not a plumber, so I'm just reading off of what our ordinances state as far as what our responsibility is.
Mister Clark looked at the diagram that was, that, he, he looked at it. He can see exactly what the problem is.
They did not tie in the two.
The correct line.
From the kitchen and the bathroom, should've been tied in together and just one line going into the septic. And I don't, I haven't been over there to see if that's even feasible without getting under the house and.
Yeah, I have no clue on that side of it, so.
Somebody was supposed to be investigating that. Somebody was supposed to be checking into it, and nobody did apparently in the last month.
So I stated.
Mister, Mister Schreuer said to me, we're gonna check into this, okay, but that didn't happen. So if I hadn't come, if I hadn't come in here tonight, if I had just waited to hear something, then nothing would've been done a- again for another thirty days. Now, how do you, how, how can you make a decision with nothing to base it on?
I based it off of as far as what the paperwork states, as far as what our responsibility is and what the homeowner's responsibility is.
Again, it comes down to who put that in there.
I didn't put it in.
The town of Fountain City is responsible for putting that septic system in.
Who's to say that when the town put it in and at some point in time, someone else come back along and tied it in, the second one?
Excuse me, I've lived there for over thirty years. There has been no work done. Period on that septic, except for when it was put in. So please don't say something like that, because you know that's not true.
I have no clue.
Well, considering that I've already, considering that I told you last time that there's been no work done.
So I'm just stating what the ordinance states as far as what is the town's responsibility, and because I just had to have mine yelled out because there was a crust on the end of it, so do I go back on the town? No, I didn't. I went ahead and took care of it because I understand what.
Your situation is slightly different than mine.
Okay.
Is it not?
I paid two hundred dollars.
Is your situation not different?
I have not, I'm not a plumber, I am not a plumber.
Okay, but here's what I'm saying to you. This situation is not the same. You're comparing apples and oranges. This was not tied in correctly to begin with. At the very beginning, when they put it in.
I was talking to Kyle about it, and he said, they think that this pipe coming out of their bathroom is too close to the wall and not letting the stuff dump. If they can go in there and cut that pipe off.
I mean, it's inside the tank, so I mean, if they wanna cut the pipe off, cut it back and let them cut it back, because it's no different than like with David's. As far as when they went in there and they had to have theirs pumped, it was up against the wall, and then also the
The pipe.
The toilet paper and everything else that was coming through there had plugged it up, so once they cleaned it all up, and like I said, there was just a short distance in there, so if it's just a simple cutting the pipe back, I just have them cut the pipe back just a little bit, see if that fixes it.
That'd be up to Kyle, wouldn't it?
No, Kyle's over streets, Kyle's had nothing to do with the sewer or water.
So we'd get, if the town does that, just cuts that pipe off, but I know that they've gotta grab it somehow to get it out of the tank. You don't want that down in there.
Yeah, I, I'm not a plumber, so as far as on that side of it, so. So we would have to dig it up?
No. No.
No.
No, I think you can see it from the manhole going into the tank, because I know when they put mine in, they actually came into the house and ran water at each station to make sure it was flowing through one pipe into the septic tank. And there was a guy inside and there was a guy outside, and I even got a bucket of water and dumped it down where the washing machine dumped that. So that they would know that everything's going through that one pipe. Because my house on the old system was two thirty-six inch drain standing up and down and hooked together for the septic tank. And there was three lines going into the first one, and they done whatever they did on the outside to combine them all. And I don't know why.
They missed that step with mine.
I think they, like any contractor, they get messed up.
Well, you know, but the problem is that, you know, they might, they messed it up and they walked away. Well, you know, but the problem is that, you know, they might, they messed it up and they walked away. And I'm left with the after effects.
Do we even know who did that? Who did that septic system back in the eighties?
No, I, I don't remember.
Mine was put in in ninety one or ninety two.
I know we started that process in the. I was thinking it was the eighties.
It was. Because we couldn't put, we could not build on that lot until the septic was in and we moved in in eighty eight.
Because the state, we couldn't get funded. Unless it was a new and innovative idea. And that's when we come up with the lagoons and the septic tank as the. Treatment plants per house.
I don't even know if the town has any records that goes back that far.
Yeah, I'd imagine that company's out business.
We're not gonna get them to do anything else.
Only one that know anything about it is Ron.
Who?
Only thing, only person that would know anything about it is Ron.
Yep. Well, he's, yeah, cause Ron was working in five. Of course, Ron's wrong, so, yeah, Ron would be the only one left that might know who, who did that.
But regardless, they're not gonna fix anything.
Would it, could we get Walker and David to cut that pipe off?
You'd have to talk to them about that.
Walker is water?
They're both.
You want Walker to do the septic?
They're both, water and neither one of them has a title yet as far as who's what. They're both doing it.
I'd want two men there regardless.
No offense to the two gentlemen that have already been out to my house. I have no, I have nothing against them whatsoever. They have, they're not familiar at all with the sewer.
I'm just.
And, and I'm not, I, I understand, I understand what you're trying to do, I do.
I'm going by what you've told me and showed me. That the pipe is too close to the wall and that's what you've been told.
Well, well, yes, but there's, there's a double problem there. There's a double problem there. And the double problem being the pipe, okay, that we were already told about from the very beginning. Chase is the one that, that discovered that, okay? Now, the second problem, the problem that, that is the biggest problem, is that it's not properly draining into the sewer system. It's not properly draining in because it's not properly hooked up.
So everything settles over time, earth moves, all of that stuff, you know, and our ordinance there wrote off as far as. What is the town's responsibility and what is the homeowner's responsibility?
Well, sir, I'll just call a lawyer and we'll go from there, cause you guys owe me three hundred and twenty dollars. That it cost me to get it cleaned out. Number one, and number two, it needs to be put together properly. Something needs to be done or it's not going to work properly ever. So I'm sorry if you don't agree with me. But y'all know that it wasn't done right to begin with. And that had nothing to do with us. Because we didn't ask for a new sewer system. We, it was, it was told to us. We had no choice.
I do believe it was mandated by the state.
Yeah.
Irregardless, it wasn't our, our choice.
Okay, five minutes up.
Yes, sir, I will be talking to a lawyer.
Next.
I don't have anything, I just came to listen.
Great game of comments.
I hope make your life harder today.
Ah, you haven't yet at all, so just glad you're here, so. I lost my paper.
We just come for the free entertainment.
Evan, there's no other visitors, then we're ready for claims and adjournments, please.
Approval of claims and payments?
I'll make the motion to approve claims and payments.
Do I hear a second?
Come on, Laurie, second, you ain't seconding it all day.
Aye.
Okay. All favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do I hear a motion for adjournment?
You wanna do that, Laurie?
Yep, I make a motion, we adjourn.
I'll second that.
Hold on, turn it on.
No, I was saying I was making a motion to adjourn. Have a good night.